All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Bladensburg Town Council Work Session for Monday, February 13th. Happy Pre-Valentine's Day, for those of you who celebrate Valentine's Day. We're now called to order for today's work session. And the first item following the call to order is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second? Councilmember McBride, you were muted. Sorry. I know you were saying it, but...
Sorry, second.
Okay, excellent. Any further discussion, edits, or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I." "I," any nays? The "I" s have it. Thank you so much. Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Charnovich, I do want to ask if the council could make a motion to excuse Councilmember Blunt from tonight's meeting. She will not be able to join us. It is a family emergency. And so with that, I'll call for a motion to grant Councilmember Blunt an excused absence. Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I." "I," any nays? The "I" s have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll proceed with the approval of the January 9th work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember...
Mayor James?
Did we lose something?
This computer, okay. I gotta ask for another machine, because this is the second meeting in a row, guys. Everything just went dark. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know what is going on with this machine. So, Mr. Charnovich, if it's possible, I think I need another laptop. I think I've burnt this out. But I'm sorry, the motion was made by which council member?
Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. And second, by... Still on the approval of the minute. Thank you, Councilmember McBride. Any corrections or clarifications on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "I." "I," any nays? The "I" s have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we're privileged to be joined. We have a few appearances at tonight's work session. And the first is from our good friends and neighbors at Elizabeth Seaton High School. And so we have with us Ms. Erica Borsico, who's the Director of Stakeholder Engagement. And I believe, is Dr. Griot joining us as well, or...
She is. She's running from one meeting to another, and I thought LMG would be her, but I am not entirely sure.
Okay.
If Griot or not.
Okay, we'll see if LMG comes on as Dr. Griot. But in the meantime, Ms. Borsico, thank you for joining us, and we'll turn the meeting over to you at this time.
Absolutely. I just want to say good evening, and thank you all so much for having me tonight. This is really a great opportunity for me, a great treat. And I know the names. I've worked with some of you all even. But it's nice to see the faces, and of course, see the faces of those who I've worked with once again. Again, my name is Erica Borsico, and I am the new Director of Stakeholder Engagement at Elizabeth Seaton High School. I've been at Seaton for 13 years, and I'm also an alumna. But this position is brand-new, and I have been put into the position, and I must say, I am just overjoyed. I love this. This is so fun for me. As I continue to grow into my position, I look forward to getting to know many of you. A lot of you, as I mentioned, I already have had the pleasure of working with. But there are many of you that I don't know. So one of my goals in this position is to get to know many of you, our community leaders. I also look to you to help me know the neighborhood leaders, the business leaders of our community. Because one of the goals that Seaton has, and I'll talk a little bit about the strategic plan that we have put together. But one of our commitments is to have a stronger presence in our community. We are committed to Bladensburg. We love Bladensburg. We've been there for 64 years. And we just want to keep doing more and more and more. So I look to you all to help us just know what the town needs best. As I mentioned, we did create a strategic plan, and our commitment in the strategic plan is to build a stronger partnership and presence in Bladensburg. And I did submit two handouts for you all from Seaton, one of which has just some basic facts about Seaton. But the other one is the the goals from the strategic plan, and it's four of them. It lists all of them. Each one talks about what our commitment is to our community. For me, again, number two is the most important, because that involves you all. And I believe, again, that your leadership is what's going to help us be able to do our best service for this community. For me, this has been most exciting, because we are also looking to build a strong collaborative effort with Bladensburg High School. I really, really want the girls of our school, and our staff also, to build a partnership with that of Bladensburg High School. We're the two high schools in Bladensburg, so we should be together, working to build a great, you know, service of great town here. So we've already started some service projects together. We worked together on MLK Day, Martin Luther King Day, pulling up vines and pruning back trees and just clearing out some debris. And that consisted of seven students from Elizabeth Seaton High School, seven students from Bladensburg High School, and a couple of staff members from Seaton, as well as Bladensburg High School, working together for the good of the community. That is our goal. And as we continue to work with Lisa Faulkner Jones, from the principal of Bladensburg High School, she too is working with us to fulfill the commitment of working together to build a better Bladensburg. And I see that Dr. Griot has joined us, so Dr. Griot, welcome, and I'm happy that you are able to be with me, of course. Dr. Griot, do you want to talk about some of the scholarship opportunities, and how we would like to be more accessible to the women, young women of Bladensburg?
Well, first and foremost, I just want to say good evening to everyone. I see some familiar faces. Hi, everyone. I am Lisa Griot. I am the new president at Seaton. I've been, this is my first actually official year in the permanent role. Last year, I was at an interim role. And as Erica mentioned, we just want to make sure that we are partnering with you all to make sure that we are making an impact in the local Bladensburg community. That is one of my chief goals in my role as president. And then the other is to make sure that we have opportunities for some of the young women in Bladensburg to attend Seaton, if that is their desire. So we've been looking at and speaking with Mayor James around a scholarship opportunity for some of the local Bladensburg residents and their daughters. And then we are actually rolling out this summer, a really robust summer camp program, and have a couple of partners that I made. As one of the criteria, one of the criteria is to offer scholarships or waived registration fees for some of the local Bladensburg young residents. So the camp is for girls in grades around grades four through eight. So I can share that information with you all. But really, it's just a way for us to make an impact. That is the mission of our school. I know that some of you had relationships with Sister Ellen Marie, and we'd like to continue that. And any suggestions that you all have on how we can increase our engagement and our partnership with you, then we're more than happy to receive that information. I also told the team that Seaton is a community school, so we have a very large performing arts auditorium. We have a gym, and so we want to make our facility accessible to you all as well. So thank you again for having us. I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you genuinely.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us, Dr. Griot. And again, to Mrs. Borsico, thank you for being here and making yourselves and the Seaton family available to the entire community. As Dr. Griot said, this is her first year in the full capacity as president, and we're so just Bladensburg proud to have you in that role. It goes without saying, I know your presence there, and the way that you embrace the students is truly making an impact and setting the tone for the school, and creating a welcoming and nurturing environment for the students, the Lady Roadrunners. So I know that is especially appreciated, but also just want to thank you for reaching out, both of you, right away, to become a part of our community, and for the way you've embraced Mrs. Faulkner Jones from our very first meeting, and getting engaged has been very, very powerful. And we just look forward to doing more with that partnership. I did want to mention, I heard back from Eco City Farm, so trying to get on their schedule so we can talk further about the ideas or some of them, so we can engage the students there, and to really support our urban farm, as that would be an amazing opportunity as well. So again, thank you all so much. I know our meeting is coming up next week, so I'm looking forward to more conversation and brainstorming and ideating around how we continue the partnership. But just wanted to open it up to the rest of the team for any comments or questions. I know Councilmember McBride was there a couple of weeks ago for her visit and spoke very highly about that. So don't know if you want to share anything, Councilmember, but want to just give you that opportunity.
I just truly enjoyed the experience. And touring the school, I received a lot of information. I was very overtaken with the pharmacy department, from what they learned from beginning to end, and how the young ladies can come out and be, I think, certified as pharmacists. And they learn from front-door service all the way to the end. And I was truly inspired with that. So thank you for having me. I truly appreciate it, and I hope to visit again at some point.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful visit. Thank you for coming, Councilmember. Erica, did you talk to them about the Drug Takeback Day pharmacy?
I did. I did that. I was just about to bring that up.
Thank you.
On April 22nd, and I have already started to send out invitations, so Mayor James, you might have already received yours. But we are having a Drug Takeback Day in partnership with the Bladensburg Police. So Chief, you probably have had it come across your desk at some point, too. It's going to be April 22nd at Elizabeth Seaton High School from 10 till 2:00. And it's any unused prescriptions, any type of drugs or anything like that. Unused drugs, over-the-counters, anything like that can be brought over to Seaton, and with the help of the Bladensburg Police, we'll take them in, no questions asked. And we also hope to have a few fun activities there for the residents as well. It's opened up to the entire Bladensburg community. Please join us. And I also want to just say, if anytime any of you want to just come over to Seaton for a tour, like Councilmember McBride took, please contact me. Let me know. Happy to give you the grand tour.
Thank you for that, Chief. I see your hand, and then I'll go to Councilmember Rout, and that'll close us out on this agenda item. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to just say, welcome to the community. We would definitely love to continue to partner with Elizabeth Seaton. I put in the chat, I'm not sure if you or Dr. were aware, that I sent the email out to all of the principals, inviting everyone to come back and start up our area principals meeting. This was a meeting we would have monthly, where we sat around, and the mayor was involved, and a couple of councilmembers, and our police officers, our community action team. So we all got together to collaborate and just exchange ideas and information about the community, about students, about activities, and also about public safety. So I would like to restart that again, and I'll resend the email out, because in today's climate, it is definitely imperative that we stay connected and have open lines of communication. So whatever we can do to enhance that, I would like to be a part of that. So again, welcome to the team, and we're looking forward to continuing, because we're not building, we're continuing to build. We've already started that groundwork, so we want to continue to build and strengthen the relationships, especially between our law enforcement and our community.
Thank you, Chief. I'm going to put our emails in the chat also. For everyone who wants to send anything to us, Chief, please send it to myself and Dr. Griot, and we'll, you know, look at those initiatives and, you know, put our thumbprint and keep going on them, push on them.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Rout?
Thank you, Mayor James. I just want to thank you, Ms. Griot, and for Ms. Erica. Don't want to mess your last name up.
It's all right.
Your partnership. You all have some phenomenal students. We've worked with them over many different community service projects. Thinking back during the census, when there weren't a lot of students that were coming out, your students, you know, came out to assist us with, you know. And that's where I think that the partnership was a little bit broken, just because of the change in administration. I would love for Seaton to take advantage of this amazing opportunity locally, always empowering our young women to become civic leaders. And so you have a council of five, you know, Black and Brown women, who are doing some amazing things for the town, their city that they work in. I would love to see some type of maybe panel discussion. I don't know if we still do career days at high school. But each of us have a different path that we have chosen, that may or may not directly work with, you know, what we do here on this role. And I think it would be really beneficial for the students to see in vivo what it is like to just really immerse themselves in the community. I just feel like if we can make a little drop of a difference, you know, to our younger children, it will make all the difference for our future. So I will take you up on our opportunity to tour. Thank you so much for extending the invitation to me today. I would have came with Councilmember McBride if I would have knew. But please, just consider, I don't know if that's a shadowing program. We have a phenomenal mayor who shakes and moves on her own, as well as our council members. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rout. And I'll have to loop you in, because they do invite community members. I think Councilmember Lundey used to be involved, where members of the community and business owners were invited, and like a career day to come and talk to the youth, and it's been thriving for many, many years. So that would be a great example to just plug in to what they're doing. You know, as you laid it out, it seems like that would be a great opportunity. But again, don't want to belabor the agenda item, but just want to thank you both for being a part. You're welcome to stick around. I think Mr. Jeffries mentioned we're talking events next, and Ms. Borsico, you may want to hear a little bit about what's going on, because we'll be tapping you for students in need of community service hours and the like. And then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brown, did you have one more thing here, so we can move forward?
Yeah, no, just in light of time, I'm Councilmember Brown. Just want to introduce myself as well. I look forward to working with you all and welcoming you all and coming over to visit and continuing to build.
Thank you for that. Yeah, as I said, you guys know I love the group over there, going back to Sister Ellen Marie, but even before that, Sister Virginia Ann. So that's going way, 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 way back. But I'm just thankful for the continued support. The leadership may change, but the relationship maintains, and that's something that we are immensely grateful for. So again, thank you, Dr. Griot, for joining us, and we look forward to connecting again soon. Have a great evening. Ms. Borsico, we're not letting you go yet. So the next item is for Mr. Jeffries to walk us through the town events lineup for 2023. So we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Jeffries.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say, good evening, Bladensburgers. I hope everyone enjoyed the Super Bowl last night. Just wanted to say that next year, this team will be in the Super Bowl, so just stay tuned. Thank you. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to do a quick speed round of going through our community events for this year. Some things may change, so it's tentative right now, but I just want to save some time for any comments or inputs on these community events. So I'll go ahead and pull that up. Oh, wow. We're in December already. Let me go back. All right, community events 2023. So for the month of February, on Saturday, February 25th, we have our Black History Month program, which is called Celebrating Black History in Bladensburg. It will be at the Bladensburg Community Center from 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM. Make sure to come out. It'll be soul food, performances, trivia. Just come out. You don't want to miss it. Sorry, let me not skip the Bladensburg Police Department. So once a month, they'll do cops and teen nights at the Bladensburg Community Center as well, and that'll be on the day before, February 24th. For the month of March, for March 11th, we are collaborating with the Bladensburg Police Department and the Bladensburg Community Action Team for the Rose Awards Women's Breakfast. Don't forget, this week on Friday, it's the last day to vote for the nominees that's on the list. If you need help finding a link, I could send that over to you, but it's located on our social media pages and also our Linktree as well. For March 25th, we're also planning to do a job fair that'll be located at Elizabeth Seaton High School. More details to come in the near future. And then also, on March 31st, the Bladensburg Police Department will be hosting a cops and teen basketball game. So stay tuned for that as well. For April, we have a Going Green Pride event. Stay tuned for details about that. I know it's the same day as Earth Day, so we don't have a specific time yet, but we'll definitely provide more information once that's received. But now, one of my favorite events that the town of Bladensburg and the Police Department does as well is the egg extravaganza. The Easter Bunny will be there, games, Easter egg hunt. It's a lot of fun, so stay tuned for that. April 22nd is the Second Annual Bikeleptics, something that the Bladensburg Community Action Team, sorry, Bladensburg Police Community Action Team started last year. It was a ton of fun seeing all the students and kids get together and brace each other and be competitive in the Bladensburg community. So next, we have another cops and teen night at the Bladensburg Community Center, and that'll be on April 28th. In the month of May, we have a Mental Health and Wellness Day, or tentative date for May 6th, and then Memorial Day event for May 29th. For June, this hasn't been thought out yet, but a Juneteenth event for June 16th. And then for June 1st, we have the Movie in the Park. June 10th, a small business pop-up shop. And then June 30th, Cops and Teens Night. For July, we have July 3rd, Bladensburg Fireworks, July 8th. Sorry, let me move my screen. For July 8th, we have the Bladensburg Car Show. June 10th, Small Business Pop-Up Shop. June 28th. Oh, this is June. Sorry, I'm going to say July. Another cops and teen night. All right, so for the month of August, this is like a Bladensburg Police Department takeover of all these events. August 4th, Ice Cream with the Cop. August 5th, Traffic Safety Day. August 8th, National Night Out. August 19th, Back-to-School Summer Jam. And then August 25th, Cops and Teen Night. For the month of September, for September 12th, we have the Senior Gathering. And September 23rd, the Return of Bladensburg Day. Stay tuned for that. And for the Bladensburg Police Department, they'll be hosting a Youth Car Wash on September 9th. For October, we have a Halloween event on October 13th, and then another Ground Green with Pride Cleanup Day, for a date to be determined in October. For the Police Department, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Fair on October 7th, and Charm Retreat on October 27th. Also, shout-out to Elizabeth Seaton High School for participating in Charm Retreat, and also our Halloween event last year. Amazing, as always. For the month of November, for November 11th, we have the Veterans Day event. November 18th, another Thanksgiving Possible Drive for the Bladensburg Police Department. We have, I don't know how to pronounce it, but we'll say Dia de las Mortas, November 3rd, and then Cop and Teen Night on November 17th. And then lastly, for the month of December, for December 1st will be Ulog, December 7th, Seniors Holiday Gala. And for the Police Department, we have Shop with the Cop on December 9th, and another Cop and Teen Night on December 29th. Thank you for listening to my long presentation about our community events, and I want to open the floor for questions or comments. Sorry, I'll let Mayor do that.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries, for walking us through the proposed lineup. While others are raising or getting ready to raise their hand, just a couple of things. I know in talking to Ms. Monford, I had mentioned, because we do the Veterans Day event down at the Peace Cross, it would be nice to offer our veterans something, like even if it's a light breakfast before the event, where we hosted at Town Hall to just thank them for their service before going over there, and it doesn't have to be that. So Council, just bear with me, but just wanted to at least put in for consideration something that we do for our veterans. Maybe it's working with the schools, and we get cards made to say Happy Veterans Day, and we, as a council, deliver them to neighbors in the community who are veterans or seniors. But if there's some other way, just to make the folks who have served our country and live in our community feel special in addition to the annual celebration honoring their service at the Peace Cross, I think that would be worth considering. And then also, just want to give some thought, doesn't have to be decided today, because we still have to do the FY budget planning. But at some point, I think we do need to add to our calendar and International Day, because we do have residents from other cultures and other countries. And to have an opportunity where they come together, we get everyone corralled together to really celebrate, whether you're from Panama or Sierra Leone. I think some sort of celebration of their culture would be appropriate for consideration. So it may not fall into the calendar year, but if we can consider that as we have that fiscal year conversation for 2024, just want to kind of plant that seed as well, because I've talked to some staff about it, folks in the community about it, but just want to get that on everyone's collective calendars. And then last but not least, we did, I think it was in 2017, we did a health fair in the fall. And I think we did it a second time in 2018. But due to rain, it ended up getting bumped, so we had to move it down to be a part of Port Towns Day. And I know we talked about this on the Port Towns Community, I'm sorry, Port Towns Quarterly Call. But if the Port Towns don't want to do a collective health fair, maybe there's another way we partner with them. But Councilmember Rout, just want to see if you would be open to incorporating the physical health aspects as a part of the Mental Health Awareness Fair. I don't want it to diminish, you know, your efforts. But if you're open to it, I would love to really get some physical fitness experts there. And I'm willing to help folks to talk about how to eat right. Sometimes the things that you eat are affecting you negatively. And so I just want to support the efforts that you're doing and just look at health holistically. So just some thoughts. I'm looking for other hands. Let me scroll down. I don't see any others.
I remixed my head, because I couldn't see the screen.
Okay.
Damn, raised my hand, cause I couldn't see the screen, right, could you stop sharing, please, so that I could see everybody? Look at that consensus. Um I do think, just to respond to you, Mayor James, I do think is um, you know, so, mental health right now is just as important as physical health, and unfortunately, because of how our men, how our health system has been in America, um just your mental health has not gotten that much attention. So I would like to, you know, let it remain mental health awareness, because, but we don't recognize that mental health is your physical health, right? Like, you have to take care of your brain in order to take care of your body, so um for the last two years, we have had physical health opportunities infused with the mental health, um but May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and that was um intentionally called out during that month in the month of May, which is why the last two years, we've had rain dates and rain dates and had to play around with the calendar. Um I also would like, I've received um some feedback from some of um the residents in Ward One. They were saying that we have a lot of child-friendly or senior adult-friendly, um but what about the millennials that live here who are maybe first-time homebuyers? Um and so I, I think um a cool opportunity that we can have that is really just um cost um neutral, is like speed-friendly. Um so it's kind of like a spin-off on speed dating, where you just have people come, um and you have different questions that people can, you know, just meet each other and be able to engage. Um I know we have engagement, you know, engagement seems to be a huge thing here in the town, but I think if we offer something like for our, you know, you know, middle people so that they could get to know your neighbor, um or another, um another name for it is uh Mister Mister Rogers Neighborhood. So I don't know if we wanna make a spin-off of that, and it's just, you know, just some prompted questions, so I do think that these are great. Um I know Councilmember Blunt is gonna be great, she's gonna be so happy to hear Mayor James in the International Fair. Um you know, in her absence, because I know they do that at Emerson House, and she was really looking forward to try to, you know, figure out, is this something we could do? Um I know with COVID, we don't wanna do like potluck, but I don't know, maybe a craft or something from your country or, you know, something like that, and maybe we can have foods that looks like that, so those are my contributions too, but I think excellent, excellent, Mr. Jeffrey.
Thank you, Councilmember Routh, and then um I know some of these would potentially impact Elizabeth Seaton, so Ms. Porzico wanna turn it over to you for some input too.
Yeah, sure, and I just, I just wanna say, you know, these are all great events, and uh Councilmember Routh, that's a great idea. Um you know, especially, that's one of the things that we really push with our young uh women at Seaton is the importance of mental health. Um we're a great venue, if you ever need a place to host um an event, but also too, I wanna just throw out there that um we've got a wealth of talent at Elizabeth Seaton High School. So in your planning of events, if you can think of other than, I mean, the obvious, you know, singers and dancers, but if you can think outside the box, you know, Erica, do you have um you know, for the International Day, we've got uh you know, international dancers, cultural dancers, uh cultural poetry, anything like that, poetry, anything you can think of, if you think outside the box, Erica, do you have uh a couple of girls or a young woman who could fulfill this role in this event? I can look and see, and I will find you somebody who can. Like I said, we've got a wealth of talent. Um so, you know, we, we wanna, we wanna be able to, you know, show the community what we've got too, so.
We appreciate that, thank you so much. And again, Mr. Jeffries, thank you for taking time to walk that, walk us through that. We do have to pick up the pace a little bit, I just realized, it's after six, and um we still have quite a few more items to cover. Was there anything else, Mr. Jeffries, you wanted to mention with respect to the event calendar?
No, that was all, I appreciate everyone's input and feedback, thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much for joining us. And so at this time, we'll move uh forward with old business that we've completed all of the uh appearances for tonight's meeting, and so uh wanted to just do a brain dump for the council to help make this more robust um in terms of the projects that we have on our calendar. And so I just did an initial dump of ideas, asked Councilmember Brown and Mr. Charnovich to help me with that, because we keep coming up with new and great ideas, but we have some important things that are already on our project list. We don't have a large staff, and I just wanna make sure that we're prioritizing accordingly. Um there's things that pop up that may be easy to do, but sometimes these new wonderful pop-up ideas, we just don't have the bandwidth to implement them. So again, just wanna be on the same page with everyone here, that we agree to what our priorities are as we move through the rest of this fiscal year and beyond, and so that way, if things come up, we can ask, but we understand respectfully staff may be tapped out because they're focusing on our priorities and may not be able to do this thing that we as a council want them to do for an event that just popped up tomorrow. So um you know, happy to take initial input, or if you all just wanna digest it, again, just think about what, what's missing, and then maybe at the next work session, we can start to go through and rank what the priorities are, so everyone's on the same page, cause the whole idea is I just want everyone to feel connected and understand what, what's on our plate. If someone comes to Councilmember McBride, she should be able to say, oh yeah, let me go to my list, this is what we're focused on um versus just working in silos and um, you know, just not being on the same page with our efforts and body of work. So um any comments or questions there? So, Mr. Charnovich, if you wouldn't mind just noting, we'll wanna bring this back up on next month's agenda, so everyone has time to just add to it. Again, tell me what, what's missing, there will be no hurt feelings, we just wanna make it as robust and complete as possible. Councilmember Brown?
Uh thank you, Mayor, just uh real, really quick, I mean, I think this right here is um so something that kind of puts us on target. And, and as you said, you know, but because with, with our staff, we have a lot, a lot of projects, and so looking at the priority, kind of just did one um with, what you're saying, because we do have the, 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 the million dollars, and the, then the five hundred thousand and the other five hundred, hundred thousand grand, that we need to make sure priorities about, prioritize and moving forward um with those as well, cross our Ts, down our Is, while we are also bringing on, on the staff to, to, to support and assist with it. So just did one um what you just received, but thank you so very much for this right here, it's a very good idea. And then, and it's across the board, aligns everybody, everybody can, can see the projects that um, that the town has before us.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember Brown, cause that is a key point. Um we, you know, we were at the uh District Forty-seven Leaders Meeting, and one municipality was sort of called out because they received about um a bond bill a few cycles ago, but hadn't taken necessary steps to move forward. And so it's just in the spirit of wanting to make sure that those key priorities with upcoming deadlines, that we're adhering to those and not missing them, because we're focused on other projects, not that they aren't good, but it's just in terms of the priority. Um that one point three million dollars that we receive from the state is a high priority, and we don't want to lose that. The one million dollars we received from Senator Cardin and that federal earmark, we do not wanna lose that. So again, it's just, as you said, just trying to get everyone on the same page. Councilmember Routh?
Thank you, Mayor James. I, I, I would like for the council to consider and think about, we can't um about supporting um our incoming town administrator with leads and or staff. I know we've brought this up before, but we can't continue to say that we don't have the bandwidth, we don't have the bandwidth. That has been um, you know, our collective response, and I understand that we do have a limited staff, and we are short. Um but as we are trying to grow and thrive um and be the best blade and spark we could be, we need to be proud with um individuals who are leading these projects. So I would really like to see strategically how we would think about um how to put the right people in the right places. Um and of course, that's gonna mean money, 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 um but where would that come from? I know other municipalities locally are looking into um hiring a consulting firm to take on some of like environmental issues, you know, that's a firm that's gonna knock out four things, and they'll have a project lead. And then there are street issues as a product, cause we're not, we're not successful with yielding um like grant, like grant staff. So maybe we need to like drill down just an idea, but um and then also I put in the chat, can I be emailed um this document in an edible word document for my edits and suggestions for the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Routh, yep, well, I'll work with Mr. Charnovich to send around the um Excel file, so that way you can edit the document directly, and I do think um you're right, it does cost money to add on, um but we also need to make sure, before we start throwing bodies at it, that we know what our focus is, so I'm, I'm right there with you. Um at this, oh, sorry, Mr. Charnovich, um you have one more thing before we move forward?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and I was just, uh, I was just dropping you a thumbs up there, that I, I think this is, this is a great idea, and it will help help all the directors, all of us with, with workflow priorities, I just wanted to make mention of that, so tha- thank you to, to all for bringing this uh, bringing this idea forward.
Perfect, thank you so much. And then um so that completes the old business, one of the things that is upcoming.
I'm sorry, I don't know if you see my, see my hand, but real quick, can we drop it into a Google Doc so that it's a live uh document and, and edible?
Actually, I was gonna ask Mr. Charnovich to put it in Teams since we're all now outfitted with that, so that way we're not um exchanging incorrect versions, so what, it's just like a Google Share Drive where you would go in, make your updates, and they're live. So I think since we're using Teams, I don't know that everyone has Google, or, you know, we can figure it out offline, but yes, it'll be a shared document, we can do that.
Everybody's Teams is not working.
Yep, Mr. Charnovich?
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I, I already do have it in a live Google Sheets format, um that I can make everyone an editor, make everyone a collaborator on the document, um.
Thank you, that's
Perfect, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Um next up was um on the agenda was uh something in reference to the Prince George's County FY twenty twenty-four budget. So County Executive also, Brooks, uh will be meeting with some of the PG CMA board members and Legislative Committee members in the next uh few weeks. And we were asked to bring forward budget priorities for that conversation, and so wanted to consolidate them down to our top no more than two to three, only because that meeting is gonna go so quickly. Everyone will not have twenty to thirty minutes to present their ideas, so as, as much as possible, I'm trying to support our president cause the mayor of College City would just identifying what our top priorities are um for the, the upcoming budget. And so wanted to open it up to the council to uh gather some input and uh collaboration around what our key uh budget priorities would be for that conversation. I know um it's, as I said, it's coming fast, I wanna say it's been, it was supposed to be March second, and I think I saw something today about it being rescheduled, so but it's gonna be in the early part of March, which is before we have our uh March meeting, so the timing is, is better suited for today to have the conversation. Councilmember Brown?
Uh thank you, Mayor, definitely, I mean, I see the rent sta- stable, stable, stabilization, cause as um, as, as we were talking about it, you know, months ago, and um when um Councilmember Routh, Routh brought that issue to the forefront. Regarding one of our uh apartment uh complexes here in town, and it was like, instead of a step, instead of us, you know, trying to approach it from a, from a municipal standpoint, that's partnered with the municipal PG CMA, the municipalities and with the county. So, you know, I'm, I'm glad to, to see that that's there, and we're looking at, looking at that, that um, that collective um uh body approach.
Thank you for that, uh Councilmember Brown, just to clarify though, that's um listed under the letters of support and supportive of the county legislation on that, but for this item, it's more so for the budget, for the county executive. So for example, one of the big things that comes to mind for me is requesting funding from the county with um to be set aside to actually go through the culvert in town and replace that concrete with a more sustainable surface that will help the water so that it flows through town, but also it's absorbed into the ground, similar to the pavers that we have at the Town Hall parking lot, because, you know, spring is around the corner, which means heavy rains that, look, Councilmember Routh mentioned, with the, the mental health fair being in the spring, typically it's subject to being moved because of rain dates. But that is a very, very big um financial project, but I, I think that's something that we should push for because it has a very significant impact to residents every time that culvert overflows. If we can't necessarily get agreement around funding for ripping out the concrete, then perhaps they can enclose it so that the water's not over um, you know, spilling over into the neighborhoods like um along Quincy Run. I'm sorry, not Quincy Run, but along um Spring Road and some of the streets, um like where Tilden comes down to the bottom. I don't wanna say the resident's name, but it's like the four hills come together and just shy of there, that culvert goes under. So that was one of the things that I was hoping that you all would support, but again, if there's, you know, another item equally important or something else at that scale where we the town don't have the financial resources, and it's something um county-related, I think we should go for it in tandem with that though, because that area of Ward One is flood-prone. Is wanted to see if funding could also be set aside for the industrial park, because again, that's an area where we do not have enough storm drains. So every time we get even moderate rain, it just floods that place, because the water just cannot move fast enough. So I really, I think that would help not just our, our residents who live here, but also the businesses who, they come here to make a living, and we wanna help them by providing a sustainable and, you know, a, a clean area, but it's difficult to do that every time we get a little bit of rain, and it's backed up and, you know, affecting their onsite inventory. Uh in addition to the ability for their employees to even be able to get to work, because it, you know, there may be challenges with the water levels. So I saw, it looks like there was agreement for that. Councilmember Routh, it looks like you had another recommendation?
I wholeheartedly, you read my whole little mind. I just think back to the walkthrough, the walkthrough that we had when our last town administrator was here, and we actually looked at the culvert and they, the amount of money that they used to just clean portions of it out. Um so I'm in agreement with you. I do think that we also should be looking at our stormwater management. I know they say, oh, we're on a regular schedule, we're on a regular schedule. I know our code enforcement um in our Public Works Department, they put in tickets all the time um because I reach out to three-one-one as well when I do my walkthroughs, and they'll say, oh, we have four tickets then submitted by the Town of Bladenburg, da-da-da-da. Is this a duplicate? You know, so three-one-one will say that, but our storm drains are also not getting that attention that they need, and that's a, we were told, that's another contract, like for them to be maintained, ma- ma- maintain, thank you. So um and then the second one I really wanna push for is um safe passage. We have in seven schools, we need to think about our children who are walkers and walking through our community and looking at safe passage routes, whether that's increased lighting, extension of sidewalks, and I, I mean, this is bigger than the seven oh four C. Uh we have a lot of different areas within town, I'm thinking Fifty-Eighth Avenue, you got two high schools right there where young, you know, our children and their siblings sometimes walk up and down, um and so whether that's increased lighting, whether that's something, we, we have to do something. I know the back of Bladenburg High School had a couple concerns with safety as it relates to the path and things of that nature that you and um the principal worked on, Mayor, but I do think there's a host of safe passage issues that we have, and we have a lot of vulnerable populations that, you know, having three senior li- um uh living facilities here in town. So I do think those are the two that I would like to put forth, just add in the um, the culvert and storm drain, you know, so it's not like three S, you know.
Yes, so I'm putting it down, so I have stormwater drain maintenance, I think that's the first one you were saying, and then also um with respect to the culvert.
Oh, the culvert.
Industrial park, this is all like under stormwater management, so I'm gonna slide this in as like stormwater subbullets, and then um safe passage. And then I know there's also some federal funding for um safe passage that is out there. Um with respect to Fifty-Eighth, that will be improved, because we have the road repair project that we're holding until school is out. In conjunction with the road repair on Fifty Seventh Avenue, the funding for the streetlights. Project Purnell has been, I'm sorry, Mr. Hall has been working hard on that with the engineer. So Councilmember, those new lights will go in along with the new road, but we're specifically waiting until kids are out of school. We can't with all the traffic do that now. So we just missed the school year with it. And so my guidance to that team was let's just think about waiting until school lets out, um, this cycle. So to the community, bear with us. We know the conditions of Fifty Seventh Avenue. Public Works will patch, you know, where necessary. But there is a major project coming to address that. But that's not to say that you're not right and that there's some other areas where those lights would make a huge impact, a positive impact in the community. So, um, I'm adding that here as well. So we have our list. I will try to, um, clean this up, send it around to everybody, make sure it looks good. So we have, um, our talking points. And since we'll both be in that meeting, maybe you take one, I'll take stormwater, however you want to flip it. And then that way we get our points across. And, um, you know, we're not, again, taking up half the meeting with the county exec to convey our concerns. And so the next item, jumping over to, um, Councilmember Brown's point about rent stabilization. I know initially the request from Councilmember Route was really, um, from the standpoint of passing our own legislation. And we really did talk about the benefits and, you know, the the back and forth happened in a productive way. And where we landed was let's leverage our voice through PG CMA. So we have twenty seven municipalities saying the very same thing, representing not just approximately ten thousand residents, but now you have hundreds of thousands of residents represented that, um, have a very strong voice in the community. And so with that in mind, um, I understand that, um, rent stabilization did go before the county council about two and a half, two weeks ago. And, uh, in the PG CMA, that meeting that took place in January, I think it was on January nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, we got a report out from a couple of folks, Mayor Selena Benitez, and I think also Councilmember Route added to it. But, um, basically the legislation that is up for consideration is CB zero zero seven, twenty twenty-three. And this is included in the council packet for the benefit of, um, residents. The purpose of this, uh, legislation is basically to, um, put a temporary stay on rental increases or at least to cap them at three percent for about a year while they have time as a county council to really work through this and come up with a solution to address, uh, the need for rent stabilization. And so the, um, the legislation reads from the effective date of this Rent Stabilization Act, a landlord shall not increase rent in an amount that exceeds three percent per annum of the existing rent amount for any tenant. The reason this is so critical is that we've had residents who've experienced five percent, ten percent, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent increases with about thirty to sixty days notice. And particularly for our residents who are retired, if you're not working, how do you justify having your rent, your largest monthly expense jumped by that amount, but yet your your income hasn't, uh, grown by the same percentage? So this is a huge piece of legislation that, um, it's in line with what we said we were going to do. We pushed for this. I'm so thankful the county council is considering this. And while individually, I think we all should testify, just wanted to get support from the council that we send a collective letter and as part of the testimony from all of us. And then again, if everyone or some of us decide to testify individually, that's fantastic, but at least there's a letter on the record from the town council supporting this piece of legislation. So wanted to, um, get input from the council on that. And of course, from the staff too, if you have any recommendations there.
Okay, Mayor, six twenty-six. Just been mindful of the time.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant at Arms. Moving forward. So is there agreement?
Yeah, I agree.
All right. So with that.
I put my comment in the chat.
Okay. And so with that, I'll take a motion. Is there, um, a motion to, uh, move forward with a a letter of support for CB dash zero zero seven dash two zero two three?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Route. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. I. Any nays? The eyes have it. And then similarly, um, as you all know, the Maglev continues to just be upon us. Uh, the developers continue coming back each year. Uh, Delegate Nicole Williams has put in HB one zero six for the purpose of prohibiting the state in certain units and instrumentalities of the state from using any appropriation for a magnetic levitation trains, transportation system in the state, providing that the prohibition does not apply to certain expenditures for salary and generally relating to state appropriations for magnetic levitation train systems. And so the purpose of this legislation is just to codify the fact that we do not want to have tax dollars from Marylanders to support this, um, technology if it does come to fruition. So it's not debating, do you like Maglev? Are you against it? It's simply saying if it happens, we want to make sure that we don't have a car industry type bailout or the type of bailout that we saw for Wall Street Bank several years ago when the economy took a turn. And so wanted to ask for the councils, um, whether or not you would be in agreement in sending a letter of support. This goes before the Environment and Transportation and Appropriations Committee on February twenty-third. So we would have to submit the letter, um, uh, into the public record two days in advance would be, which would be next Wednesday, I believe.
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Route. Is there a second? Uh, sorry, you were muted. Okay, seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. I. Any nays? The eyes have it. Mr. Charnovich, I'm sorry, I was looking down and reading and just realized your hand was up. Did you have something to add here?
Uh, no, that's okay, Mayor. Uh, my my point was only procedural. I just didn't want to jump in and interrupt you without raising my hand. Um, it was, uh, just to state that, um, these items were also on the regular meeting agenda tonight. If you wanted to also formalize and take your action there, uh, in addition to here, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, given that it's not financial, I think it's fine doing it in the work session. And their letters of support, it's no outlay of capital or anything like that. So, um, I think.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll just remove it. And then I'm going to ask for a motion to, um, to postpone item C, uh, because I had requested information to give to the council in advance and did not receive it. So I've wanted to table that. Next, the electric vehicle charging stations in Bladensburg was something, um, Councilmember Route had requested. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, um, the chief of staff, um, Councilmember Ivy's office, um, was sharing a resource about EV chargers, um, additional funding opportunities for free and their low cost. I know we have, you know, a few come in. I don't want to misquote. We have a few few coming in both words. Um, but I wanted to, I, um, I'm just interested in the benefits as as it relates to the redevelopment. Um, I would like for us to consider, um, hosting or co-hosting a interest meeting um, for our businesses that are on our four fifty corridor. Um, and the purpose of this co-host would be to, A, introduce them to a funder that will be able to fund their EV stations so that we can have additional stations so that so as as I understood, um, the information that was shared and I did share some other written information with the town council is that when you are considering redevelopment, if that is something that's coming, like new age as it relates to electric vehicles, which they are coming, um, eventually there will be just electric vehicles. We don't want to be behind the ball. And so if we are, I think we did a great job as a town council with hoisting ourselves to be able to partner with Pepco to get, start the process. But because business owners own their own property as it relates to the four fifty quarter, as we think about redevelopment, while we're in our redevelopment issue slash solution, we should be looking at hosting informational sessions for our businesses to receive some of this information so that then they could create the partnerships for low or no cost EV chargers. Um, just an idea I wanted to bring to you. Well, thank you.
Great. Thank you for that, Councilmember Route. And thank you for sharing the information as well. Um, any comments or questions from the team regarding the, um, hosting an interest meeting for businesses along the four fifty corridor? Okay. Hearing none, I think we're good. All right, Councilmembers. So thank you again for that. Um, the next item that was placed in the packet was the reminder about, uh, Growing Green with Pride for the spring of twenty twenty-three. As Mr. Jeffries noted earlier, it does coincide with Earth Day. And it also coincides with the fact that we received three hundred trees through the grants, uh, through CCAR, which is amazing. I did ask Mr. Charnovich if, um, for Earth Day, it might be possible to do something a little different than what the program calls for. So typically, the way the grant works is they contract with a vendor. Tell me if I got this right, Mr. Charnovich, who does the tree planting as part of the agreement. But, um, a day of service went so well. And our friends from Quincy Run and Washington Rowing School and the Bladensburg Waterfront Park are like chomping at the bit because they want to help plant trees. And so the idea was perhaps we could get a stock of the three hundred to plant in the community and go out in teams to do just that, including at the Bladensburg Waterfront Park. Mr. Charnovich, I know we talked about finding out if we could get that sort of exception. If you didn't get an answer yet, it's fine. But if we could just find out, you know, by the end of February, so at least that way we can get the information out, start doing our call for volunteers. Many of you, especially, um, those who live near a tree line, may have noticed that there's those invasive species growing up around them and those vines choke the trees out. They literally suck the life out of them. So they become dry and in storms, they can do serious damage, especially the really older, really old and tall trees because they can come over on power lines and houses and things. I applaud, you know, Pepco and others in the community who are really taking stock of their land and doing what they can to remove the ones that are dead and just pose a threat to the community. But we also need to be replacing them. And that's why the three hundred are so important. So wanted to, um, just get that on everyone's radar again for April twenty-second. We'll try to see if we can get permission to have, um, some, you know, hands-on activities. None of us want to sit back on Earth Day and watch someone else doing all the work. So, um, want to keep that in mind. And then as, um, Ms. Borseko knows, we'll be, uh, reaching out to her for student volunteers as well as to Bladensburg High School. But if you have any other groups who you think might be interested, like I think there's a certain person in a sorority on the line and, uh, things like that, you know, the more the merrier. Let's make it a huge event. And it can be sustainable. It can have engagement in terms of picking up trash, just doing the whole thing. So we really continue the efforts to beautify the community. Uh, anything else on that? All right. And that takes us to the end of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Brown, we did it. It's six thirty-five. Picked up the pace.
Record time.
Yes. Thank you all so much. Um, so with that, we've come to the end of the agenda. I'll call for a motion to adjourn, give folks a break in between the two meetings. Uh-oh. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. I. Any, any nays? The eyes have it. Thank you so much to everyone who joined tonight's work session. We're adjourned and we'll see you back at seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.